Good evening, everybody. I think that we are ready to go. We still have some people enjoying your dinner, but that's okay. We can multitask. So this is a joint meeting of the Longmont City Council and the Boulder County Commissioners for September 29th, 2022. Welcome, everybody. We have a really full agenda. I'm assuming everybody in here, we know everybody, but let's go through a fast introduction. I'll start with the Commissioners and the work area. So Barb, do you want to stand up? Let us know who you are.
Thank you. Yes, I'm not a Commissioner, but my name is Barb Halvand. I'm a county staff.
Thank you. It is. It doesn't sound like it's no.
No, I have to turn it on.
You have to turn it on.
Yeah.
Anyway, my name is Matt Jones. It's great to see everybody. I like these get-together. We don't do it enough. It's been great to talk to you together and see what's up.
Hi, Ms. Saravis. Good afternoon. My name is Margot Lotry, Boulder County Commissioner, District Two. This is my district, so I'm just proud to be here in Longmont with y'all this evening. And I do hope, we do quick names and introductions, but then I'll move us into what we are going to do. So I just wanted to thank you for hosting us and for this meeting again. Ms. Lotry.
I'm Janet Peterson. I'm the Boulder County Administrator. And Commissioner Lively gives her excuses she's not able to be with us this evening, but wishes you all well and wishes she could be here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clay Long, and I'm the Chief of Staff of the Boulder County Commissioners having started last spring. So good to meet everybody. Thank you.
Councilwoman, you're going to go first.
This, this mic is, there's a lot of feedback associated with this mic. And it goes on. Tim Waters, I represent Ward One, Council Council.
Marsha Martin, Ward Two.
Aaron Rodriguez, I'm an at-large council member.
Joan Peck, Mayor.
Joan Peck, Mayor. Suzie Alguerri, Ward Three, Rev. Shakira Yavro, at-large.
Carol Dominguez, City Manager.
Eugene May, City Attorney.
Do we want staff in the back to introduce themselves?
None of us have microphones. Donna City Clerk.
Zach Art, Public Safety Chief for the City of Longmont.
Christina Pacheco, Children Youth and Families Division Manager.
Carden Arvitas, Community and Neighborhood Services.
Iain Gerto, Vandoza, Community Services.
Thank you. So as I said, we have a pretty packed agenda. There are six items on it. Well, hopefully, we'll get through this, but if not, if anyone has, Council or Commissioners have anything else that they would like to discuss tonight, we hopefully will have time for that. I'm going to turn the meeting now over to Commissioner Lotry, and she will run our meeting for us.
I've got to use yellow light now.
What does that mean? That's off. Red versus yellow. It's on.
It's on now.
Okay. Now it's a red light instead of green light. I'm ready. Thank you, everybody. So let's take a look. Two things, what I'd like us to do.
I'm going to give y'all a minute to help me do this because we have people in the back and we have people, I understand, live, so I'm not going to just talk to you all right in front of me. And I have people behind me. Great. Thank you. Appreciate that. So we have together, and for folks who may not know, we do meetings, the County Commissioners do meetings with our Commissioners from around the region, from our towns and cities, and we try to keep it on the annual schedule. And we also have experienced COVID as the rest of the world has, and so this has been great to get this going again last year as far as meetings and opportunities to get to know each other, to hear about priorities, and to listen to the work that folks are doing. What I would like to do to start us off is to give our council members and the mayor an opportunity, as well as us as Commissioners, an opportunity to just give a quick addition of your introduction, but what work that you're focused on. I think it's really helpful for all of us to know where are you. So if I have a question about a project or something I hear on the news, then I know which council person to go to and we say ourselves. And I think it's very helpful for the public in transparency and understanding how we work in local government to have a better idea of what it is that we're all working on and doing. So I am happy to turn it over to Commissioner Jones, so that he can briefly just talk about the work that he's doing in the Commissioners' Office.
Well, I'm trying to pass some valuations is what I'm trying to do. Really, that's my focus right now, the three valuations we have. And I continue to work on environmental issues. It's kind of my passion. Every time I see Eugene May, I think of wire gas. Thank you, Eugene, for all the work you did to help the cause. It resulted in the set of 181. It's complete in my head. Let's do it again. So that's what I work on. I want to get to the agenda, so we can do that.
Great, thank you. Just really quickly, outside of all of the day-to-day work that we're doing and the land use hearings that we're running to and from around Boulder County, as you all know, a couple of the projects that I'm working on separately is Workforce Boulder County and that board. And we are in the month right now celebrating the future of work and what those opportunities of life for our residents around the county. I have been working on the Executive Advisory Board at the Boulder County Bear Grounds, and some of you probably know that we're in Concept Three. There was a significant amount of work, especially during COVID, in regards to community outreach and hearing about what, what we would like to see the Boulder County Bear Grounds look like as a structure, infrastructure, opportunities for new collaboration, and more users. So that's been a great process, and there's some staff who's been helping on that. In regards to transportation, Commissioner Levy is a point person with Dr. Cog, and I was working on Highway 119 in that particular corridor last year and continue to work on Highway 287, both ourselves, but also in the future, looking at the north. And what does that look like for connectivity with one another at a round of opportunities? The other one that I think is really relevant to this evening's conversation is I continue to lead the Consortium of Cities. And for those of you who have been on the council and also involved in work that happens around the county, a lot of those initial conversations begin at the Consortium of Cities with different representatives from all of the councils and in from our town and cities, from towns and cities, the Commissioners' Office, and also group field. And we are now, we were talking last week in regards to the whole wage, the regional housing partnership started at that group and some of our other ones. So those are just a couple of the pieces. I'd love to turn it over to maybe we'll go from this side, Council of Underwaters, and then to that way. If you'd like to share any specific projects that you're working on.
Thanks.
Push is a push, Lynn.
Thanks, Commissioner Lotry, and Commissioner Jones and Julie's staff. You know, we, our work doesn't kind of lay out quite the way yours does with the areas of responsibility that we have a chance to pursue, both from policy and operations. But in terms of topics that I have a particular interest in, where I spend time when I'm not involved on a Tuesday night, would be with, primarily with our early childhood work, and I'm anxious to follow up on that topic tonight in this, in this meeting. And we're all involved in housing discussions and, and what to do about housing, et cetera, things that you see on this agenda. So I'll pass the mic. But that's my, you know, kind of top of mind for me is what we do or not do for our youngest residents.
Hi, I'm Marsha Martin. My focus is, because I don't think it's really possible to tease these three topic areas apart, are the clean energy transition, new urbanism, and urban electrification, and density, and then transit, because if you don't focus on multi-modal transit in a better way than we're doing now, you can't eliminate the greenhouse gases and you can't squish the people together to put more of them in the same space. So really, all those are so closely related that I find it difficult to think about one without focusing on all of them. Thanks.
Hello. Based on my background, a lot of kind of my work and conversations step around housing. I was a former Planning and Zoning Commissioner for the city of Longmont, a real estate crazy professional. So I spend a lot of time with our Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as talking to our fellow council members about our visions as far as what it looks like as for affordable and attainable housing. So that's, you know, my specialty as it goes.
Hello. I am, I work on everything on this agenda, just as I think all of council knows, but specifically, I am working on unhoused residents, and that's a lot of work. We're hopefully going to move that needle in the near future. Also, regional and internal city transportation. Been having a lot of meetings about it. I work on Dr. Cog with Commissioner Levy. We have a lot of greenhouse gas goals and targets that we need to meet, so there's a lot of discussion about how do we do that? And if we can do it on a county level as well, it would be really helpful if we can collaborate.
So I, Suzie Alguerri, Councilmember, Ward Three. So some of the things that, you know, I look at priorities and things that I've been focusing on, as well as, and it seems it's in line with a lot of what other council members are doing as well, but looking at housing, for workforce housing, folks, working-class people who don't make enough to, you know, to hit that market rate, but make too much to qualify for affordable housing. So looking at those options for our teachers, our firefighters, our police officers, all, you know, all of our little sector employees who are kind of, you know, squeezed out of homeownership. So looking at that piece, as well as early childhood education. I'm a third-grade bilingual teacher, so by day. And, and so looking at those opportunities for education early on, as well as daycare for working-class people. I'm teaching a bilingual school. We have, you know, the high nineties, free produce lunch. A lot of our parents have multiple jobs, and having those opportunities for them to be able to continue work and have a safe place for their, for their children. Mental health is a passion of mine and working with staff and other entities around quality mental health access for all our residents. And that's something that is very personal to me for a family standpoint. And then youth engagement, so getting areas involved. One of the projects I did was growing a boulder with my class was the redesign of the sugar, sugar beet factory. So they got to envision, was able to see a map. So finding opportunities to tie the square district into what we're doing at the local level and zero waste, a number of our cap, we're focusing on that as well.
Shakira Yavro. Everything that's on this agenda, specifically, I believe we're all working on, I don't think we're probably working on opioids, but that is a concern. So for me, our youth engagement as well, as far as our young adult youth, meaning hoping that we can have them a part of the city and also moving them into internships within the city, providing them more opportunities and hoping that if they go off to college, they'll come back to Longmont and hoping that they will also feel like they are a part of the city and we have provided them the tools and skills to go out into the real world. Also, I would say housing for sure, affordable housing and workforce. But for me, mostly those who are renting and feel like they can never, ever, ever be able to own a home in Colorado. Creating a program or researching for programs that renters can have an opportunity to purchase a home, although it may take them five years, but they know in that fifth year, they'll be able to purchase them a home with programming and hopefully escrow accounts with their rent, with their landlords. And so if we can create a program with landlords and renters, that would be awesome. Then people will have hope and be able to generate well.
Thank you all. Appreciate that for introductions. Just looking at the agenda, there's a few topics that have already been discussed and put on this agenda, but I want to make sure that there's something else people want us to add now, and we're going to try really hard to get to everything that we can, just keeping in mind that last year, we had a long list and we didn't quite get through it, but I just want to open that up if there's any other items that folks would want to add to this agenda. Councilwoman Waters.
Martha, thanks for the question. Would you, would you entertain some feedback just from the process of developing the agenda? I don't, I don't want to get this off to a negative start.
I don't either.
But the process of building the agenda has been, has been disappointing to me.
Okay.
And if, if you'd like to know why, I'd like to share that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We were asked for agenda items from our clerk. And what's on the list? I submitted five agenda items. Three of the items I submitted are on this list. I think I'm the only council member who submitted an agenda item. So the two of the items I submitted, whoever processes the agenda decided shouldn't go on, and I think that's fine, that's, it's your meeting. But the, but the others that I submitted were edited. And what is troubling to me is to be asked for agenda items, to submit them, and it wasn't, it wasn't kind of random thoughts, or it wasn't thoughtless, the way I wanted the agenda items that I submitted. For someone to edit them and publish the agenda without any consent with who submitted this and we're going to change this. And the reason I'm concerned about is I read a piece in the Longmont later yesterday that was reporting on one of the agenda items, one of the items on this agenda, and it was a total misinterpretation of what the intent of the agenda item is, and I think because of the way it was written. So, you know, to the degree that anybody in the county is concerned about not offending other elected officials when asked to submit an agenda item, somebody might want to close the loop if you're going to change what's submitted and let somebody know that it was changed and why.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So, and I'm happy to respond just from this standpoint. As we do with all the meetings that we, public meetings that we participate with, towns and cities and other commissions from around the region, we start with, hear suggestions, and someone else sends some suggestions. So I don't know where the disconnect of, I submitted something very specific and it came back to something different. I will tell you that I edited because I hadn't received other ideas either. And what I was, my intent on that was to make sure that all of us could speak to a more general topic versus a very pinpoint specific. But I didn't know that they were your ideas. I didn't know whose ideas they were, and I didn't go back to council member, but instead allowed my staff who are super professionals and yours to. And I can say that because I worked for the City of Longmont as well. So what I've been hearing is that we need to have a potential process.
Yeah, I just, I just think at this level, if asked, and if it's going to be changed, somebody deserves the courtesy of being told, hey, we're modifying what you submitted for these reasons. It's more sustainable, you know, it's more generic, it's more engaging, or whatever. It's, that was the disappointment, to say, well, who edited my work without talking, without talking to me about it?
Yeah.
That, that, as I've developed, that's never happened to me.
Thank you. Yes, I appreciate that feedback, and we'll, we'll talk about how is it processed, a piece we can make sure everybody understands what that process is. Any other feedback about how we match our agenda or just additions to the agenda so we can keep moving forward?
Yes, thank you, Margot, for asking that. These really aren't, maybe not discussion topics, or I would just like to bring up at some point my concerns about the House Bill 1303, 211303, Quinn, C.D.A., and the county has contracts for any project that uses C-MIT and the processing of that.
Okay. So 1303, C.D.A. contract, is that sufficient for a topic on this list right now?
Perfect. Yes.
Any additions to the agenda?
The other one that I have is, I would just like to make a statement also, so for future conversations perhaps, about our consolidated entry, and maybe we need to look at that again and see if it needs to be updated.
Consolidated entry?
Oh, cordoned, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other additions to the agenda?
Okay. I do.
Thank you.
You know, and I'm sorry I didn't put this in earlier, but it really didn't come to the forefront of my, my mind until I started having conversations with our Public Safety Department and looking at some of, you know, because we're, we're trying to be proactive, diversion, restorative justice, those avenues that help bring people to the right, you know, taking the right path. However, because of a lot of state laws, I know this is out of our realm, but if we can kind of work together to lobby, to look, to reevaluate some of legislation that has passed that has negatively impacted our capacity to keep our community safe.
So the topic is legislation that has passed?
Legislation on, I'm sorry. Oh, just, you know, legislation on, I guess, criminal justice.
Legislation of the state law?
Of the state law.
Okay. Any other suggestions or topics that we didn't get to prior to this meeting?
Okay, I think that's it.
Great. And like I said, we're going to try and move through this. I do want to just a clarification, because on number three here on the agenda has public comment. Is there a public comment period that we need to be allocating time for? We didn't have public comment last year at the meeting, so I just want to clarify and make sure we keep on time.
And that has been a subject of discussion with our staff, and that we were trying to figure out how to do this. Public comment will only come at the end of the meeting if we have time. And that was why we had a sign-up list. But it won't be a comment on, it won't be testifying or anything, it was just if they would have a question of one of us, but that would be at the end of the meeting. The first thing we need to do is get through our agenda.
I would prefer that if we're going to offer public comment, that we allocate time for public comment, certainly for folks who are here. If you've come here and you're ready to speak, then I think we need to honor that. Is there any strong objections to allowing folks to, if it's been announced as public comment?
I had told a couple of people that called me that it would be at the end, so.
Okay, but there's five people I'm hearing on the list, so I think we need to accommodate. But is yours a two-minute or a three-minute public comment?
Three.
Three minutes. So it sounds like 15 minutes of public comment?
Okay.
So can I get a timekeeper? Just, I really appreciate that, though, so that we can allow those folks to participate in this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Do you have the list? I have the, a list.
Okay. I don't have the list, but we've got five people on there, and we'll work through that. They're, they're, okay, great. Yay. Thank you, everybody. Let's get going here on our agenda. So the topic, the initial topic here is what Councilmember Waters, you already alluded to in regards to childcare and early learning in Boulder County. What's here, scale of challenge and ideas for response? So I'd love to have you all read that because that was one of your suggestions, and let's have some discussion.
Thanks, Margaret. But what, who was the wording initially? And there was a reason for it. Childcare and early learning in Boulder County, and then the so-called scale of our challenge, options for responding, and Commissioner Professors. And if I were to start the last part of that, I'm, I'm making an assumption, and some of it, based on conversations you and I have, that the county faces the same challenges that the city does in every employer in Boulder County when it comes to staff having access to accessible, quality, reliable childcare. So if I put with that, the fact that we have a coalition in Longmont that's been working for a couple of years, and you're, you know, deeply familiar with this, with the coalition and have been a contributor, the scope of the potential proposal that that group may come is, would extend beyond the city limits of Longmont. This is really a group that's taking a broader look at the scale of the need and what are the options for responding to that scale. And I will tell you, we have a retreat coming up. There's a, this is a group that's seriously deeply involved in discussion about what the, what the options are. And as you know, one of those may be a proposal to the, to the Commissioners to put on the ballot, a question about creation of a special district. Doing, if that happens, it's really important for that group to understand whether or not, from a, from a Commissioner perspective, proposing something that would, that would give the county a chance, as an entity, as an organization, a chance to be part of the solution, right? So it's something that would maybe map onto the boundaries of both school districts in the county, which is now, what, part of Boulder and probably part of five or six more counties. Or, I mean, that's a heavy lift. Or is that, should we just mind our own business and stay focused on the San Gray Valley District? If we do that, that's kind of something that maps onto the San Gray Valley School District more than, more than our city limits, more than Boulder County, parts of Weld and Laramie. But, but it would, it would not include the county. And we just don't want to go forward without having a better sense of what you, what you kind of you see as options and preferences. That's the reason for the last part of this, in terms of an approach. We would think differently about it if we knew that the county and the Commissioners wanted to be invited in or dialed into a public institution.
Thank you. Did you want to add?
No.
I would just pass the mic.
Just moving the mic to the seat.
Yeah, absolutely. And folks have additions to that question. Thanks for clarifying the reasoning of what, what that question was initially, or the item on the agenda. Two things. The Early Childhood Council, as you know, is part of the county and has been at that table. Danielle Butler has, but her team has done a lot of work over the years in that conversation. So I, to me, and I was just checking with my county administrator real quick, Jan, if you just said, we need to have a conversation with UCC and some other folks who haven't been part of those discussions to, and it probably wouldn't be initially with the Commissioners, but we could certainly have a conversation about who needs to be in that conversation. Well, it would be helpful to me, and Commissioner Jones, you're welcome to add in here on UCC if you're interested on this particular question that Councilmember Waters has, because I would say we need to know if it's truly a special district question, so we can have the appropriate people in, in that meeting as well. If it's about the ARPA funding and that grant money that the Commissioners did choose to allocate for and an ask that came partially from that UCC group. So just to define that so that we can make sure that the right people are in that room to get you further along.
I will tell you, the mindset of the group, of the coalition, that it's, it's kind of operating as the Longmont Early Childhood Coalition, and the thinking is much broader than Longmont. So this is kind of how work got started.
Yeah.
The intent really is to bring a proposal that would allow childcare in early childhood education to be funded as a public good. So that's, that's beyond, it would be, it's a braided, the language that we're using is like a braided funding strategy, take it as a hybrid model, kind of mixed delivery model, take advantage of every dollar available. But to not leave childcare as a, the way it exists now as a market segment that has to compete with a whole bunch of other variables, it ends up being way too expensive and way, way less reliable than it needs to be for most of our families. So the only way, from my perspective, for the folks who've been in the discussion, the way to get there is through a special district. That, that is what is top of mind. I don't know that that's what will end up, but I can tell you that's where the thinking is right now.
So just to clarify again on that, who needs to be in that room? What I'm understanding, so let me know if I'm wrong, that there's some technical questions as well about what, what would a special district require at the county level? Okay.
And legal questions and financial questions. There's, there's, obviously, there's a lot involved. But, but we don't want to waste your time or waste the time of anybody else thinking about something that either the, is too technical, or it's too complex, or the politics are just too heavy a lift to put something together like.
Okay. I was just going to see if we could just agree to move that conversation forward, because we have to, more than one Commissioner has to agree to allocate some staff time. So what we'll do is we'll take it back to staff and have a conversation, and then I will respond to you with staff's.
You always do. I know.
Okay. Any other additional comments?
The reason I'm hesitant to say yes is the county doesn't stop. It's always amazing to me, and you guys know this.
I'm going to turn this one off.
The other thing I learned is. The other thing I learned is. The other thing is that we, what I also learned is that we've already done a lot of work. And so I just want to put it in context of all the other social programs we do because we really try to deliver good human service in all sorts of ways, and this is one of them. I just wanted to fit in. And I wanted to be productive if we go down that road. And to Mark's point, we did help out when the ARPA wanted to do some of that work. And we're trying to do Head Start as well. We just opened another classroom in Boulder, which is never anything important. So it's great.
To make it through item, bullet point number one. Additional?
Yeah, I'd like to say, based on what Commissioner Jones said, if ARPA money has been put in one place and then there's Head Start, to me, that seems to highlight the need for unification of the problem and the working group for the solution. The ECC is a collective impact group which should be going partway toward alignment in the sense that, you know, what collective impact does is that it aligns a number of independent organizations with one another. But someone with jurisdiction or legal understanding of what something like a special district needs to be doing, it seems like there comes a point when formalization of the idea of unity needs to be done because otherwise we lose the advantage of not having agencies working with duplicative programs or at cross purposes. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is it's not sufficient to say, well, we put money here and we put money there. We need to have an instrument for aligning where the money and how the money is used.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to our next topic. Reducing risks of gun and other forms of violence. And I think.
I put that on the agenda.
And I think we changed, I might have changed this.
Well, it was reworded. Let me, can I read the, because there's a reason for the wording initially. The way it was worded initially was beyond ordinances, reducing risks of gun and other forms of violence. What I didn't want to risk was inviting a conversation about ordinances and all that associated with that. Because for me, that's a starting place, not an ending place in that we are, as I, what has resonated for me multiple times, I wish Claire was, or Commissioner Levy was here. Because as I read comments and heard comments about, we need to do everything we can possibly do to reduce risks of gun violence and other forms of violence. And I agree with her. And we are in a different place right now than other municipalities and the commissioners with respect to ordinances. But that's not, for me, that's not the question. The question is, what should we be doing beyond that? If ordinances are the beginning, what would be the bigger initiative that only happens in Boulder County? Because the commissioners and other elected officials, along with all the other leadership available in our communities, lean in together to say, this is not a legal issue. This is going to be a cultural change. And to influence the culture, we have to have all the cultural influencers, from elected officials to faith leaders, to nonprofits, to cultural brokers, saying this is important enough for us to do it together, right? If there's one county in America where it's possible that we can influence the culture to reduce these risks, this is it, let's take this on as leaders, along with our roles or titles as elected officials. That was the, that was the question. And whether or not there's an appetite, this is a huge issue. Whether or not there's an appetite, I don't even know if we have the appetite. But we've talked about it, right? It's a big ask, it's a heavy lift. I just think it's worth doing and dramatically increases the prospects of reducing violence beyond what we're, what it's about. I'll make one comment and then pass it on. I know if you, in this morning's, there was an editorial authored by somebody from the Kansas City Star. It was focused specifically on schools and all that's going on hardening schools as targets. But the point of the article was, that's just the beginning. There's so much more that has to be done to change the culture that somehow signals it's okay for people to pick up weapons and use them on one another. And that's what I think is the work that's next for us as elected officials in Boulder County. And I'm just wondering where others want to stay.
Thank you.
So, thank you for the question. I agree with Councilor Waters. However, I think that leaders need to put out a statement of who we are, what we believe, and where we want our city to go. And to me, that is making a statement of its ordinances, of its rules and regulations. Our residents need to know what we think about what's going on. If we don't agree with the rules and laws that are made by our Supreme Court, by our district courts on guns and weapons of mass destruction, because that's what I feel some of these are, then we need to speak up and say, these laws are hampering us on the local level to contend with what's going on. By not saying anything, for me personally, it feels as though we aren't paying attention or that we don't care. So I personally think that we do need to make ordinances. The ordinances are good and I want to thank the other cities in Boulder County and Boulder County for stepping up and saying, this is wrong, folks. Whether you feel you have the right to do that or not, it is wrong to go out and intentionally murder people. So I feel very, very strong about that.
Thank you. I can just share really briefly in regards to the conversation, which I think is what you're asking about. That this is one of the topics that came to the Consortium of Cities over the last couple of years. It was in a response to community members after the March 21 mass shooting in the city of Boulder. It was a response from local electives that we all got together and responded. And the statement is one piece. And then, I mean, where you're headed here, Councilor, is what else? And what does that require? And so we began a series of meetings with those electives around the region, from Edgewater to Park Collins, to have this conversation about what else could we do? And where we started was with ordinances. So I would love to hear responses from those who are interested and comfortable, but that's where we, as the county and county commissioners, landed, starting in June, of addressing continued work that the county has done in regards to education and awareness about the concerns of gun violence in our community. And then with the ordinances connected to the work that every town and givers and, again, local electeds around the region have been discussing for a while. So the question about what's next, I think, is for everybody, all the electives in the room. Happy to give folks another minute to think they'd like to address it.
Thank you. I would like to say that I still contend that the passing of local ordinances was something that was an error by the General Assembly because almost all of them are either now declared unconstitutional or are unenforceable at the local level when we have adjacent jurisdictions that are not going to pass local ordinances against various modes of restricting sales of firearms. So I actually think that the correct response, regional response for us, which we happen to be the most densely populated region in the state, is to kick it back up to the state legislature and say, no, this was a false start. The little jurisdictions that are acting cannot possibly defend against the gun lobby. And therefore, the state needs to take on the burden of defense. So that's my position, and I hope that we can consider that regionally.
Thank you. And I believe most of the folks that were part of those conversations, that hope is that this is our ability locally to respond to state legislations, speaking of state legislation, that allow local jurisdictions, so incentive LT-56, to move local regulations forward with the hope of influencing state legislators to move state and then move to national. So I agree with, I think that you're saying.
No, I think that's the opposite of what I'm saying, actually. I think, I think that passing local ordinances makes, instead of requiring action at the state level, means that the localities are vulnerable to lawsuits without having, you know, they take on the responsibility of defending the lawsuit, but having the ordinance in place makes absolutely no difference whatsoever. So the state needs to, you know, if the state, and I believe in local control for most things, right? Pesticides, you know, is a real good example of where local control can make a difference. But on firearms control, we're talking about people crossing jurisdictions with intention. And so the state gets rid of the legal burden and the political, you know, heavy lift and puts it where, on small jurisdictions that have no ability to respond. So I think that we should push right back hard on the state level jurisdictions and use our voices lobbyists without trying to bring our law enforcement organizations to bear.
Thank you.
I do have one question. Then we can move on. So in your conversations that you had with community, other elected officials, were there any police officers, people who are at the first line of defense in those situations, were they present to share, you know, what they see? You know, what, you know, because, you know, one of the things is, you know, I'll talk to our public safety chief, I'll talk to other police officers, because they're the ones that are right there. You know, they're the ones who know, you know, and who could give us really good insight in passing good policy. You know, just meaningful policy. And so, you know, I don't want to pass an ordinance just to pass an ordinance. I want it to be meaningful and I want it to make an impact. Otherwise, you know, there's no point in that. You know, making sure that the right people, you know, people who are there, you know, the first line of defense when the shooting first happens. The person who is right in front of the shooter right after they committed these atrocities are the police officers. Are, you know, what has been the feedback from, from sheriff, from police officers who are out on the field? I'm just curious.
I have not been part of all of the meetings because there's just smaller cohort of folks working with every town, so I can't tell you yes or no enforcement. But I think what I'm hearing really in that question is back to the Councilor's question about, beyond ordinances. I don't think the question was, let's focus on ordinances, but have a background of what we've been doing here locally as a start. And so I don't know if anybody else has other ideas or if it's just an ask to consider that we start, maybe start that conversation. I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're responding to the question that really was being asked.
I think there are a lot of things on the agenda, so I'm kind of keeping my cutter right, I have a bad analogy. So I, for sure, I agree that the state should do more. Having been there, having the scars from doing more, background checks, magazine lists, domestic violence, people, everyone. It's hard, really hard to do it. The county ordinance was far easier. I didn't receive any death threats. I didn't have to be escorted to my car like I did when I was in the state senate. So I agree they should do it, but the problem is the federal government's not going to have it. The state has a lot of difficulty, we give the makeup of the state and how they like people to get it done. And we need to push every level we can. That's kind of where we are. And it's not optimal in any case. I felt this way as a state legislator during state law when it shouldn't have been federal. Universal background checks, you kidding me? And every year, they tried to overturn it and I was on the committee to defend it. And we bring up all the people who were murdered or raped and serious crime who did not have a weapon. That kind of sense may make sense, but it's not happening. The federal government has it. Some of the state government, they've done more. But I also think that we, you know, we got to push it every level. And that's what I think we're on too. Because I was thinking this thing through when we did ours. And the fact is, we've got challenged on one of four in court and we didn't, the assault weapon purchase. And that's the only one. The others are in fact, they're not challenged. And so this, the case law on this is, you can do some things and can't do others, and they're kind of, race testing the things that are more aggressive, basically. But I think we're kind of stuck there. To change the culture, Jim? I wish. You know, I don't understand it. And what I've learned in being legislator and local government and you can get done because it can be darn hard to do. And that's what I'm saying. So you got to push it. And if somebody has a great way of changing people's minds about weapons, I think great, no power to you.
Can I just make one more comment? Great question, Matt, about changing minds. And I think you got to change hearts before minds change. And I admire, I admire the courage that the commissioners brought to this issue and that other municipalities have brought. I'm not certain what the net will be in terms of effects. My, here's one of my worst fears is that a lot of money's going to get spent defending lawsuits that ultimately people are going to lose in a situation that was. And I think about how those dollars could be used differently. And the one, what I keep, and this probably people will go, are you nuts? I mean, this is, this has no relevance. But I, the model for me, kind of the image of this, is what happened in South Africa with the truth and reconciliation process. Coming out of decades of violence and oppression and the worst atrocities we can imagine, those leaders conceived of a process to bring a society together and hold it together. And they did. There were a parts that changed and minds that followed. There was accountability. When there was, when people needed to be held accountable, they were. There was also forgiveness. So it's, and it's probably not an equivalent, but it's an example of a society that took this on and pulled it off. Not perfectly, not serious, but it does require the willingness of leaders to lean in hard and accept the challenge.
Thank you. We'll move to our next follow-up point, which is residential development, which also was edited. And I feel like it's probably Councilwoman Waters. So go ahead.
Yep. It was, it was edited. And the, this really is a question. It would help me to learn more about how the commissioners view any kind of development, but residential in particular, outside of the municipality. Because as we think about when to or not to annex, right, to bring something from the county into the city and all of the issues with respect to infrastructure and sprawl and all the things that we become concerned about. I know you have similar kind of concerns. I just, it would help me to know, as we continue to acquire open space, which means, which we all love, the open space program, but less land available, and if development is allowed or not in the county, that would be helpful to know as we think about other housing proposals that come along. So it really is a question. I'd like to be educated more about how you all think about development of any type, you know, outside of the municipality and the county.
So this is a very old issue of this county. Back to the Jersey Ethan's. And the thought of the commissioners at the time was. And the thought of the commissioners at the time was, development should happen over their city services. If the county is limited in what it can do, compared to our rural city, we don't have a ton of authority. You can only do what we are allowed to do in the same city. Excuse me. So the only development reviews we have, if somebody has a legal building in the lot. We did one today, specific house. We don't do subdivisions like Douglas County or this is. And the idea is to not have sprawl, and I think it's worked. And I also think, and we're always educating people who have an interest in us providing city services when we're outside of the city, talking about this issue. We have limited powers, we are not a city, we are a county. We're not designed to provide water, that kind of thing. And it's, it's kind of a struggle, but that's, that's the focus. So we want you to do city services, and we want to do county services. And we are not going to have much development outside of cities. In fact, the compliance specifically says, we will push knowledge to cities. So that's, that's the philosophy. And I appreciate them doing, they were part of yours. I mean, you can drive across county lines and see the difference. A couple of them are part of an effigy in Iowa, by the way, in downtown. That's how contentious it was about school, for some. Here's my history lesson.
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions on that topic of development? Let's move to the next item here. Status of current and future efforts for unhoused residents. Thank you for your representation and finding me participating. Seriously, I appreciate it.
Well, you know, I'll be home if I, if I, so I apologize, I guess.
No.
This is not unrelated to the previous item. As we, and we're going to, if indeed, and I understand, Matt, the, the thinking. I just, it was, it was helpful to hear the clarification, both the history and, and, you know, the challenges, the constraints that the county faces. But it does raise the question, then, if, if we're going to house the housed, if we're going to house the unhoused, it's going to be in the municipalities. And I know there was a regional, before I got, right before I came on this council, there was a regional conference and a regional strategy with some targets set. And it made me that there's, through the consortium of cities or other ways, lots of progress that's been made, or iterations of that going forward. And I'm just out of the loop. But it would be helpful to me to know from a county commissioner perspective, kind of what's your vision for where we ought to be going in terms of housing the unhoused? Understanding it's going to happen, it's going to be, have to, it's going to require cooperation, shared resources, and it's going to require municipalities to take this on, so.
Thanks. I, a couple different pieces on the, just on the housing topic in general. One of those is, it's still in county, unincorporated Boulder County is accessory dwelling unit. And I know City of Longmont has a phenomenal ABU program that I use as an example, and I'm talking to other regions. We have, we do allow ABUs under very specific guidelines in unincorporated Boulder County. That might be an agricultural tenant where an applicant has to prove that they really do need a full-time ad worker to approve that additional residential unit. There is a family care unit for the reasons that we know that housing needs change for families, with multi-generational household. And that applicant has to explain the real need of why somebody has to be on site for health reasons, et cetera. And we just looked at, under the Article 19 and response to Marshall fire, a disaster care unit. And the commissioners approved an ABU in that, under that scenario in phase one of our review. And the phase two of that review will be looking at ABUs in a similar, similar way, counting why for unincorporated Boulder County. So I just want to make sure that's known that, because that was new news for me when I started. I didn't, I didn't know what those opportunities were. The other pieces, as you all know, and I saw some of you spell Ron Hoffman last week, the continued push from county commissioners as well as Boulder County Housing Authority, because we're also that board in regards to affordable housing opportunities throughout the county. The consideration of what areas in our county are part of the regional housing partnership, which I think is what you're, you're referring to. That came from the consortium of cities, that initial conversation, and then that summit, folks who do that work together. And through the ARPA funds, we just allocated another $1.25 million, I believe it was, at least $1 million to really, thank you, to get, reinvigorate that work, because we know that we need to be doing that. The other piece that's continued conversation is outside of affordable housing and rental units, of how do we respond to homeownership? So to some of the questions or comments and introductions from both Councilor Yopper and Councilor Kedal Ferrey, what does that look like at the county level? And that was another decision we made in the ARPA funding. Specific to Longmont and this community was to fund homeownership in, with how to tackle humanity in $800,000 of infrastructure that will allow that to fill those units here in Longmont shortly. So we're looking at those projects, we're looking at a TOD study in Superior that could be a really phenomenal transit-oriented workforce housing along the corridor, affordable housing. And we also know that these projects take a lot of time. So just to kind of give you a breadth, and there's many more, because of this, but I'm sure we're talking about how do we get that more refinanced? You all probably know that there's a 40% vacancy rate on that particular complex here in Longmont. That's a loss of units that are literally sitting vacant right now. And so how do we work with USDA and those guidelines that are so strict to really help us support families? So these are just a quick, a quick summary of some of the projects in regards to housing, because every place that is, every unit that we can get people into opens up a unit for somebody else in a different scenario, whether it's our senior housing, or it's transitional housing, et cetera.
So I also want to weigh in on this. This is actually more similar to the things I wanted to add to the agenda, which is the Boulder County Coordinated Entry System, which is phenomenal. Their vision is housing first. But we are in kind of a different, a different sea change here with, with the pandemic, with the inflation, with everything, that we're seeing more and more unhoused people. The problem with housing first as the only way to get housing is that we, we could use transitional housing here while we build housing for the unhoused. We can't seem to build it fast enough. So if we could look at the coordinated entry system and maybe expand their view of it, to have transitional housing in order to, in order to house some people for a while, so they can at least work, have a place to put their stuff, while we are building housing for them. The other reason that I'm interested in this is that it kind of also goes into the justice system in that, in order to be able to work with our unhoused people who are not exactly good players in the community, we need to have so many beds in order to put, according to, I think it is the Ninth Judicial District as well as the Supreme Court, that you, you must have a place for people to go in order to have regulations for them to leave your city. For example, to put up regulations around your parks, your public, public areas that they cannot be in. So we're kind of caught in the middle right there. And that is in the interest that I have, so that we can actually get more control over our city with the unhoused. For the bad players, which we seem to have quite a few of that, probably would go down to the last bullet point here of opioid concerns, in order to give, to divide the groups of people, the ones that want to be housed, but we don't have the housing, if we put them in transitional. So that is something that I, I would like the county to think about and to have that discussion. Is this, is this a way that we should go now in this different paradigm that we're seeing?
I'm wondering if you could just, so one of the, the other projects, I don't know if projects is the right word, one of my other duties is working with a number of area county commissioners. And they have been, over the last six months or so, hearing from communities around different counties in regards to concerns about unhoused communities. And one of the suggestions, just to clarify what you mean by transit, transitional housing would be helpful, because the other term that I've heard in some of those presentations, which are, is recovery housing? So I just want to understand which housing you're talking about when you, when you're asking for transitional housing versus housing first.
What is the term you just used, Marta?
Recovery housing.
Recovery housing. I don't really see much of a difference. What, what I am thinking of, and this is, again, just off the top of my head, and what I've been trying to work on, is having transitional housing where wraparound services not necessarily located. What, what we're seeing in our community is that we have a lot of services, but people who do not have a, a place to go have to wander all over the city to get those. And if you're unhoused, if you're having issues, chances are of wanting to go to recovery cafe, to go to the hour center to find different services isn't working. My vision, I guess, of transitional housing would be that the services would go to them, rather than having our unhoused people try to figure out through the city. We have a great brochure that tells where they can get different services. But to find them when you are carrying your clothes around, when you're, it doesn't really address the problem on the scope that we're seeing it. So the transitional housing, in my view, and this would be a discussion, of course, would be that those would, would schedule times of the day that they would go, those services would go to wherever that transitional housing is. Did that answer your question?
Yeah. Okay.
So my point of view on this is, I support the work staff's doing with helpful solutions for Boulder County, which is a housing-first approach. The problem is, it's a difficult problem, I'll admit that. The other problem is, we're going to have a long ton of it. So I'm really supportive of staff using evidence-based approach to do the most good. And that's where the coordinated entry and all that comes in. Because people who are unhoused often have other challenges they have to address, and being out would. And so that, that's the focus of this group. And so I would ask that staff have that conversation about your idea and how that kind of fits, and what can, can be done. For such a difficult thing, I've been really impressed with how many people are, are housed. The numbers aren't low, but it's because it's such a hard, hard problem. So anyway, that's, that's my two cents.
So Matt, I agree with you on one, just on one part of that. The reason that I am thinking the other way is because we started the safe lots where some of our residents were living in their cars. The problem was, they had no place, once they were living, drove to work, came home, they had no place to shower, to eat, et cetera. So the churches, the whole churches opened their doors, allowing them to use their bathroom facilities, and then Hope provided the meals in the evening. They, out of that, I hope I am stating this correctly, but 59 people have been housed out of that in permanent housing, because they had a place to be out of the weather, a place to get services while they waited for the housing to become available. We also have people living on the streets who, who would like to be in housing and have said they want to be, but they have no place to go while they are doing that. I know the Boulder shelter is there, but the hours don't always work for people when they are working and they get off at five, and they have to be in the shelter by five. So, and they have to be out of there by 7:30 or whatever. So that is what we've been, what I have been looking at for the past seven years, is how do we, how do we make that gap work? So that people who really want to be housed have a place to go. We know who they are, we're working with them. But do we just say, hang in there, you can sleep, you know, good luck sleeping on the river until we can get enough housing for you? And that's, in our community, that's what I want to house and, and bridge that gap.
Again, I think the staff should have their conversation about that, that challenge. There's a lot of, that's, I, I trust our staff, professionals in education and all that, in this more than I trust myself. That's true of a lot of county businesses. As a commissioner, you kind of see, you're three CEOs, it's kind of the way it works. And so staff does all the work, you have to provide direction. If there's a problem, then you step in. You know, there's problems, it can have a lot of difficulties. But still, we have great staff, and I trust them. I say that because I used to be a great staff member at the city of Boulder. But truly, that is the lesson I had from that job, one of the causes, is that people around you know what to do, and when the leaderships got involved, sometimes it didn't go very well. And so I'm going to trust the staff on it.
Great, now we know, they know what we want to be working on.
Thank you, thanks for sharing that. All right, we'll move to our next item here on current and future regional transportation projects.
So I have been working on, as some of you know, to get that goofy Northwest Corridor Rail project to Longmont. Our, our hope, our best hope at this point is that Pete Bluejack gives Amtrak a boatload of money, because they are very interested in using our Northwest Corridor to get to Denver. To that means, I got on the board of the Front Range Passenger Rail District, and we meet every month. Hopefully, our very first block of funding will come in late December, and then another one in March. So constantly pushing that and working hard on it. We are, to that effect, December 3rd, going to have a transportation meeting in Longmont with Andy Carson, who is the director of Front Range Passenger Rail, and I will speak to the community, let you know where we are, what we are doing with it. We invited Deborah Johnson, who is the director of RTD, as well as Eric Davidson, who is our RTD director, I'm sorry. Deborah Johnson is the CEO and executive director of RTD. Eric Davidson is just our district representative. So we should also have the study done by BNSF, hopefully around late April or May of next year. And that'll give us some direction as well. To the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners Coalition, every month we talk about transit, and there is a coalition that is really pushing to move this forward. If we don't get that money, and they do not pick our alignment, then I think we need to have a, a different discussion about, we have to stop trying to do this and, and think of a different way. Locally, Counselor Martin and I are both on a connectivity group that is looking at re-examining, putting out RMPs for transit companies to provide local transportation within our city that would augment what RTD is doing now with our free, with our free bus service. However, many of the cities, and I do think the county has had these conversations as well, about maybe RTD needs to get out of the local transportation and concentrate on the regional. So those conversations, I think, are real, and we need to have them and move forward in what we can do for our cities. Any? Any, absolutely any comments or suggestions are very, very welcome in how we move this forward.
So I hope to jump in. I agree with you, Joan, we need to learn our Northwest Corridor. Tell you a quick story. I used to do a lot of town halls when I was a state legislator, do some town halls now as a county commissioner too. I did them in East County, so I was in Longmont, Los Feliz, Longmont. And sometimes you choose issues and sometimes issues choose you. And I can tell you, almost every town hall in the district, regardless where it was in East County, said, when are we getting our train? Over and over. And that's what people want. And as Casey Becker told me when she was figuring this out, why don't we give people what they want? And I think we need to pursue the federal funding. I think that's the most likely path. However, if that doesn't happen, I think the answer is giving up on rail. It's saying, look, do we need this bus or do we do the rail? And the thing is, the bus is cheaper to do incrementally, but when you stand it up, it's a lot more money. It's kind of like getting your gift to save for something big and they spend it here and spend it here and they don't get enough money for the big thing. That's the conversation I think we should have for duplicating services in corridors. And in fact, and we should be thinking about putting money in there, and I know it's RTD money and all that, and allegations and all that. And RTD needs to perform. We shouldn't give them an inch, in my opinion, of this. It's something they have failed us on and almost every other corridor, I say every other because a couple of are complete. But the trade-off, if there's limited money, let's get the rail. Don't keep talking about bus forever transit, which isn't really bus forever transit, it's faster buses. It's not a dedicated lengthy bus forever transit, it's mostly. And prioritize what people want. And it's true, I heard this in Boulder too, I was in a town hall for some of the Boulder listeners and we had a beer with a friend, five or six people standing around, same sentiment, very strong. And so that's what we should be going, in my opinion, give people what they want.
When it comes to intracity transportation, I absolutely agree with that. When people want the train, we should hold RTD accountable for that. Enabling RTD to do what they have at times succeeded in doing, which is providing intercity transit by taking the noise off their plates and in particular negotiating something that improves their business model by removing their failure points. I don't see how that is at all in opposition to what Commissioner Jones just said. The models for intracity transit, which is an aspect of multi-modal transit, is, you know, it's different than intracity, intercity transportation. I say intracity so much, but I can't say intercity anymore. But, you know, our, our internal inside Longmont multimodal plan is different and we get just as many irate and urgent requests for us to complete our bike and pedestrian network, to have ride-sharing services before you meet with us, to somehow provide a way around the city that can minimize personal automobile ownership or personal automobile use without writing an RTD intracity line that is optimized for the fewest number of drivers and the fewest number of vehicles. Because that's the wrong objective function for intracity transit, right? You don't want one long trip around the city and if you're at the wrong end of the, of the line, you've got to ride for 30 or 45 minutes to get from someplace that you could get to in 10 minutes by car if you have one. And that means that ridership is always going to be limited to people who don't have a car and can't walk that 10-minute drive. And it's never going to be a choice that people will take instead of driving a car. So I really, the whole point of this long story is that they are two separate problems. I absolutely agree that we need to hold RTD to account in terms of true rapid transit. I also think there's nothing wrong with negotiating with RTD to get them to agree to taking local transit off their plates so they can be better at giving us our damn train. So I think they're two different, two different things. I just want to add one more thing. You know, the state and Dr. Cog have greenhouse gas reduction levels. We are building more roads for more cars. We are widening roads, we are putting on extra lanes for bus route transit. Even if everybody had an electric car, the congestion would still be horrible. We would still need more lanes and more cars. Amtrak has in their model electric train, electric engines. So it makes more sense to me to not put as much effort into widening I-25, but getting that train, putting all of our, all of our dollars, all of our energy into helping getting that front range passenger train down I-25 and not spending a lot of money on more cement, more cars, more, get them out of there. Get them out of the cars and make high-speed rail. So that is the other reason I really want to push this, is that if we are really, truly interested in getting rid of greenhouse gases, then we need to have fast transit that can help us get to our goals faster and cleaner. A train will do that.
I just want to add in a couple pieces just for context as well, what else is the county doing in regards to this conversation about transportation? Yes, on Northwest Corridor, yes, on educating folks how to use what we have, yes, on addressing the final mile. There's a lot of different pieces that we can do. I do want to make sure that folks know that the Highway 66 from Maytown over that widening section is partially funded by the county tax. And there's, speaking of ballot measures, a transportation tax extension that is coming up on your November ballot. And without that extension of the current tax, it will change to that, that number. Without that, we can't move forward on our multimodal transportation. We can't open up some new gateways in regards to accessibility, mobility for all goals here in the county. And it would really pull us back to very basic maintenance of infrastructure. And just to give folks, I don't think it's a surprise, our work is from City of Longmont because you all are such great partners in regards to recovery. But we are still working over at Sugar Road on a road construction project that was, in response to the 2013 flood we experienced here in Boulder County. So just for context, a couple of the other pieces, the rightfully Longmont, we mentioned that is also in cooperation and partnership with the Trunk Holders County and City of Longmont. The East County Line Road from Zlatin over to St. Gray Creek, that's also split at cost. And that's a construction project that's in the planning for 2023. As far as just other partnerships that we're working on. And then, of course, the bus route transit, the Colorado 119 multimodal transportation project, the commuter rightway. So there's a lot of different pieces we will talk about transportation. So I just want to make sure folks know that Boulder County Staff Transportation Department is doing a lot of work in partnership with City of Longmont as well. When we talk about the regional work that the staff have been here. And also, First City Longmont, the benefits residents here specifically.
Marty, you're correct. And I want to thank the county very much for all the input you're putting into our transportation within the city as well as in within the county because without your help, we couldn't do it. And none of us could, we need to work together, so thank you very much. And Matt, I did make a motion to include the transportation, let's see, in, in our response and support of the county managers. Because I know I was hearing this during that a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, 1C is the transportation, right?
Yes.
Yes. So 1A and 1B were voted out and 1C will be, okay, thank you for that. I was speaking over the same page. And thank you, we'll share that thank you to our staff because we all know that it's our staff who does a lot of the heavy lifting. So we have three more items on here. One was just in regards to opioid, and then thinking of my events, the Regional Council. But the topic on here is opioid concerns.
That was on the county.
On the county.
Okay, and my understanding is that there was an ask maybe from the mayor to Commissioner Levy about what was going on with opioid council?
I, I, yeah, I did.
You asked, and so that's why, that's how it got added, based on the request. And my understanding also is that our city manager, as it was in Longmont, City Manager Harold D'Amico also participates on that. And because Commissioner Levy isn't here, I don't know, he wanted to just touch on it so that folks are aware of the work that first meeting that has happened.
Yeah, so I did give, can you hear me? So the city council did vote on an intergovernmental agreement where we moved our funds over there. As part of that agreement, I believe I got put on the CROPP group, which is the policy oversight for the opioid conversation. We had our first meeting last week, last Thursday or Friday, I believe. And basically, it was, a large part of it was what I would say is an organizational meeting in terms of setting up how we were going to operate as a group. They did present, associated with that in the IGA, there is a technical advisory group of which we do have, the City of Longmont has a member on that group. And that technical group has been working on looking at projects in the first year of the opioid settlement that is what we would consider to be shovel-ready and ready to go now and spend those funds. They gave us a list of those projects. And so we're in the process now as board members of going through that list and evaluating them. And then I think we'll have a more robust conversation at the next meeting, which is scheduled in a couple of weeks, I believe. So we've got our first in, we're all getting our sea legs under, so we can understand what that looks like.
Thank you. Just as a question for folks who might be listening, is there an opportunity for public comment in regards to that list that you're talking about? Or how would community members who weren't elected to be on a not-voting seat of those regional councils participate?
In terms of community members, I know they did, trying to remember the agenda. I know the meeting was open to the public, but there wasn't necessarily, I think, a public comment period in that one. I'm not sure what the agenda structured in terms of the future items. But I know that, like, I have to go through all the list of the projects. And we talked a little bit about the concept of funding a shovel-ready project now. This is something that I brought up in the conversation. And really looking at the need for treatment dollars. And, you know, so one of the things that I'm going to be particularly interested in in terms of those projects is what, what really encovers funds ongoing into the future? And how does that impact the possibility of treatment programs? And is there going to be money in the future? Because if we allocate a lot of dollars today for projects that are shovel-ready today, does that limit what we need to see? And this is from our Public Safety Department, is really more focused on treatment in the future because that's really driving a lot of our issues. And are we limiting funding available to us in the future? And so that was a question I brought up in that meeting. And I think that's where I'm going to be looking at it. And so for our council, once I can get through this, I'll be able to give you a more detailed explanation.
Okay, thank you for filling in with an update. I want to, we've got one of the additional options or topics on here, but we need to get to public comment because there were five people that were on that list. And I want to let somebody else facilitate that how you normally would facilitate because our ending time this evening is 7:30.
Dylan, are you going to use a timer or?
I'm happy to time if you'd like me to be your timer.
Okay, so to the public, we'll continue to, just like we do, I suppose, at the meetings, you have three minutes and your name and address. And the first one on the list is Eileen McCarron.
Do you want to just read through the list so folks know who's going to be coming up next?
Sure. So Robert Colts will be after Eileen, Steve Altshuler and Newman, and then Stan Young.
Hi, here, here.
No, it's, is it off?
No, please, hold it a little closer to you. So, good evening, I'm Eileen McCarron and I speak for Colorado Ceasefire, a statewide group dedicated to reducing gun violence. And I live in Denver, but I was, I'm here at the request of a Longmont resident. We've been active since 2000 and we worked to repeal the preemption law, which I will let you know that the preemption law was enacted in 2003. So before that time, cities and counties could pass their own gun laws. Longmont does not suffer the level of gun violence that the larger cities of the state do. Denver, Colorado Springs, and Aurora actually comprise three-fifths of the gun homicides that have occurred already this year, 187. Nevertheless, you are not a stranger to this epidemic. Just this August, a 13-year-old boy was shot and killed and another injured near a basketball court in a drive-by shooting. And last year, a postal worker was shot and killed in a domestic violence incident. There is no question that stronger gun laws mean fewer gun deaths and injuries. The correlation is very strong. States like Hawaii, Massachusetts, and Connecticut have strong gun laws and low gun death rates. Similarly, states with large cities like California and New Jersey experience low gun death rates because of their strong gun laws. For example, California's gun death rate is one-third of that of the sparsely populated Wyoming, where gun laws are second weakest in the country. I'm going to talk about proposals that don't necessarily run into the brewing issue. These are ones that haven't been subjected to lawsuits across the country so far. So one of these would be the waiting periods proposal, which would strongly be impacted by, impact suicide. Suicide attempts by firearms are fatal 85% of the time. Another is prohibiting firearms in sensitive places. Certainly, this is an obvious public safety issue where children are frequent visitors. Daycare, museums, hospitals, libraries, and parks, just to name a few. But it'd also be valuable in places where large crowds gather like in stadium and where alcohol is served. The relationship between gun violence and alcohol and drug abuse is incredibly strong. The repeated incidence of shootings, sometimes fatal, in Denver's Lodo is quite illustrated. Another is requiring gun stores to post particular signage reminding people of the danger of bringing guns into their home. One valuable measure is gun dealer regulations. Colorado has no licensing program, it could be a test case here.
Thank you. Robert Colts.
Yeah, thank you for having me here to speak here tonight. And actually, I was, I put down possibly I would speak to this issue of the child, childcare and early learning. But I was more specifically interested in like the topics of education, not so much on the budget and the funding issues. So really, I don't have any comment on, on that. God grant me the courage to change the things that I can and the wisdom to accept the things that I cannot. As you can tell from my shirt, I have a strict belief in the Constitution. The Constitution is what makes the United States what it is. We may not always agree with it, but it's our founding guideline. I want to point out that guns are a legal issue in our Constitution. I think Dr. Waters said they shouldn't be, but they are a legal issue. We can't help that. 75% of mass shooters obtained their guns illegally. There are already enough laws, we just need to enforce them and not take away the rights on our citizens. Mass shootings stopped by police average 11 deaths per attack. Mass shootings stopped by a good guy with a gun average two deaths per attack. The Supreme Court has ruled recently that states cannot have a made-carry rule. Everyone has a right to carry. This I disagree with. Sadly, they even ruled that released felons have the right to carry because the Constitution doesn't say that they cannot carry. Local cities are being fiscally irresponsible if they try to enact laws that are contrary to Supreme Court rulings. It's going to take up lots of court time, legal time, and the issue's already been decided. Also, 76% of mass shootings are in cities, in the cities are in gun-free zones. You can look this up. The shooters are not stupid. They don't want to be shot back at. That's why they go to schools, they go to churches, they go to supermarkets, they go where they feel will be no guns. Let willing teachers be trained and armed, and have schools have one door for access. The key there is willing teachers. Now, I wouldn't leave a gun to everyone or anyone, it's people that are ready, willing, and able to be trained. Support our police, support our Constitution as you all swore to do when you took office. And as far as the opioids are concerned, cancel your city-sanctuary cities and quit inviting illegals and drugs into our cities. When a criminal or drug dealer is arrested, prosecute them. Quit letting people off. That's why Denver is number one in the country for gun crime, because the justice prosecuting attorney for Polis, they said that after the third or fourth part of that, we should consider arresting these people. Arrest them after one, there won't be two, three, and four. And Chicago has the most strict gun laws in the nation, and they're number one in deaths and murders. And we all know that from hanging this podcast. Thank you.
Ann Nunez.
Good evening. My name's Ann Nunez. I live on Sundar Street in Longmont. Thank you for the opportunity tonight for this dialogue. It's been great. And Mayor Peck, I thank you for your comments about the need to make a stand, and that it's important for us to use our voices to express our feelings about gun safety and violence reduction, and that we can nitpick all night, but we have to do what we can, where we can, when we can. And so I think that's really important. I have a couple of notes here. So yeah, the initiatives do matter, and I think we're seeing a tide turning in our country about our interpretations of safe laws and creating, not undoing the Second Amendment, but reducing harm. Mass shootings are horrible, but what we really are looking at in Colorado is the number of suicides and domestic violence deaths by guns, and there are many things that we can do to help reduce those. Lastly, I would just want to say, well, two of the state initiatives, I think, have been really helpful, and we need to just continue to work on them. Safe storage is making a big difference, and our city can continue to support safe storage. Appreciate the chief on public safety here has helped us with a couple of safe storage giveaways, and we will continue to be doing that. We have another one scheduled for Veterans Day. And also the ERPA laws, since people figure out how to use ERPA laws more effectively. Right now, it's mostly law enforcement, but friends and family. As a city, it's one of those things we can do as a community to help educate. Don't need new initiatives on this, we just need to help people understand what the laws are and how they can use them. And then finally, I just want to say, I think the most important thing we can do right now is find the middle ground. I think we can all agree, we don't want a three-year-old to pick up a gun and kill themselves. We don't want that to happen. That's family fire, where it happens within a friendly situation, nobody wants that child to have died. Suicide, a 14-year-old that comes home and finds an unsecured weapon. Those are the kinds of things that we can start really chipping away at and make a difference, and change the culture over time about the use of guns and the proliferation of guns. So, thank you.
Thank you. Stan, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stan Gell from Longmont, and you'll all like how brief I'll be. I have four questions for our Longmont City Council on gun violence prevention. One, is there anything more important for elected officials to do than to maximize public safety? Other, mostly the other municipalities in our county have already taken the lead on gun violence prevention. Longmont must also step up. Two, are the leaders of, as the leaders of Longmont, wouldn't you want to leave a legacy of doing everything possible to prevent gun violence and safeguard our children and all of our city residents? Three, will the city of Longmont bury its head in the sand while Longmont parents bury their children? For what will it take? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Stan. So, Marta, I'll turn this back over to you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that wants to make a statement? Did you close your public comment? Okay. Seeing that, I will close public comment. Yeah. We're going to be done here in five minutes. Thank you to the public who's here, and I always find it very helpful, whether it's a land use hearing, a business meeting, et cetera, just to hear what people are thinking and certainly what's happening specific to Longmont is important to us. I just want to say thank you for hosting us. Thank you for the meal. Thank you for the dialogue, and appreciate the continued conversation. As we are serving, we are all public servants. Elected officials, we are on call all the time. We signed up for that, we ran for office, that's why we're here at these tables together. I want to name our staff, because our staff did not run for office, and they did not want to be here at 7:30 in the evening, and they do it because they are also public servants. And so I always want to make sure that we recognize everybody who is here and helps us come together. So I'm not going to speak anymore, just want to say thank you to everybody.
Yeah, just one thing. I want to recognize you, I think. Yes. So Eileen, it was obvious, it's the House, with Anne Marie Jensen, who people around here know, doing that work, and you were in this mic early on, and I was on the video reference often for these bills, and you were a trooper, and your perseverance is incredible. We're learning from you for Northwest Rail, so we can make that happen. But thank you for doing all your work and done. It was funny when I saw you when I came in this room. Am I back in committing? Thank you. Thanks for mentioning me.
I want to thank our staff as well. I know that you don't want to be here this late at night, but thank you very much for all your work, and thanks to the public for showing up. And I think we are probably, does anybody else want to make a statement? No? City Attorney, do you? City Attorney, do you?
We can be done earlier than our cutoff time. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.